Good afternoon, all. This is Rick Hackett's staff. We are recording. You may begin.
All right. Thanks, Rick. Hello, everybody. This October 20th meeting of the Boulder County Planning Commission will now come to order. This is planning commission Chair Sam Libby speaking. Due to COVID-19 concerns, this meeting is being held virtually. Information on how to participate in the virtual meeting has been posted to the planning commission website at www.boco.org slash capital P capital C. There'll be an opportunity to remotely provide public comment on the dockets listed in the agenda during the respective virtual public hearing portions for each docket item. I'll provide instructions about that when we get to each document on the agenda. We'll start first with the roll call. Go through the commissioners, Sam Libby here, Gavin Millen, Dave Su, Mark Blumfield, Sam Fitch, and then Goldfarb.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Reminder to the commissioners, identify yourself before speaking and speak slowly and clearly. All of our votes will be roll call votes. Please remain on mute unless you're ready to speak. And then when speaking, identify yourself as planning commissioner Sam Libby, for example. And we'll move on now to a review of the minutes. Are there any comments or additions to the minutes?
I'd move to approve the minutes. This is Commissioner Goldfarb.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Blumfield, a second.
Okay, let's do a vote on that. Sam Fitch? Yes, Sam Libby, I, Mark.
I.
Anne.
Hi.
Gavin.
Hi.
And Dave.
Hi.
Okay, minutes are approved. Thank you. Moving on from that, we will go into any staff updates if there are any. And hearing none. Was there already? Okay, we'll move on. We have four items today, four different duck items for our planning commission meeting. At this time, I'll take the opportunity to explain the hearing process going forward. There'll be opportunity to provide public comment remotely on these individual items. For those that we've specified, we will take testimony for. The order presentation will be first to hear from staff on a docket, then the applicant, if they're present. And then we'll move into accepting public comment from any individuals who wish to speak. We have known to sign up in advance, though you're welcome to sign up in advance. We'll call on those folks first if they do. If you have not sent up in advance and you do wish to speak, you can put your name in the chat of the Zoom meeting with the docket item you'd like to speak on, and we'll make sure to get to you. We'll also have an open call for comment with each docket. Everyone will have a chance to speak. And if you join by computer, you can sign up in the chat, as we said. You'll be able to speak through the Zoom meeting if you're on audio there. If you're on the phone, you could raise your hand by pressing star nine. I will unmute you when it's your turn to provide comment. When it's your turn, the system will ask you to unmute with the star six. And then you can check that we can hear you and go from there. During public comment, each speaker will be able to speak for three minutes. And there'll be a timer that deeps at the end of the speaking time. You'll be able to hear that over the Zoom or your phone. Time can be pulled at three minutes per person for a maximum of 10 minutes. The names, addresses of those people pulling time should be submitted. And they'll need to be in attendance at the time of this, the speaker speaking for that full time. We asked that you do not submit comments or questions in the chat box for speaker signups only at this time. Please remain on mute when possible. We will be able to mute you if there's some background noise. Members of the public will not be able to share their screens. The applicants are welcome to. For the applicants, if you have presentations ready, please have those pulled up. When we get to your section of the presentation, you'll be able to share the screen through the Zoom meeting. All right. With all that, we're going to start with our first doc item, which is an update on the East Boulder Subcommunity Plan, the 60% draft and community engagement process from Hannah, I think.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. For the record, I am Hannah Hibley, the Long Range Planning Manager at Community Planning and Permitting. This agenda item is before you today because of the city and county's joint comprehensive plan, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. The BVCP includes East Boulder as one of 10 sub-community regions identified in the plan. And those sub-community plans are adopted by the city only. But in the spirit of the comp plan, the city seeks to keep the county planning commission up to date and informed as this process evolves. And Jean Gottsev from the City of Boulder is here today to provide that update. And at this point in time, I'm going to turn things over to Jean. And share my screen.
Great. Thank you, Hannah. And thank you Chair Libby and members of the planning commission. As Hannah mentioned, I just would like to provide a brief update on the East Boulder Subcommunity Planning Process. The planning commission doesn't have a formal role in the adoption of this plan, but as our partner in the implementing the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, we thought this might be of interest to you, and we wanted to let you know of some of the upcoming engagement opportunities. Next slide, Hannah. Okay, get my notes to move ahead to. That'll be good. There we go. All right. So just a little bit about where, what we're talking about when we talk about East Boulder. The sub-community is generally east of Foothills Highway and north of Arapahoe includes some really significant landmarks like the Foothills Hospital, Valmont City Park, the municipal airport, and the Flatiron Business Park. It's about 1,600 acres and only has a very small population within the sub-community boundary is the San Lazaro Mobile Home Park. That's actually not in the city limits, but in the Boulder County area, too. But while the residential population is small, our daytime population, at least pre-COVID, was pretty large, and that's included about 800 businesses, 17,000 employees that work in the area but live someplace else. Also, as a part of this sub-community planning process, the project includes the detailed plan for transit-oriented development in the 55th and Arapahoe area that will support the future bus rapid transit and high-capacity transit coming to this area at some point soon in the future. Okay, next slide, please. Included in your memo, we had a map that, this map that shows the handful of areas that are in Area Two, or what we call that the area that where the city and county agree that they are eligible for annexation, but not yet in the city. And San Lazaro is that number two right up there close to the top. One, this is important, while we're not anticipating land use changes in any of these areas, the San Lazaro recommendation would be to more actively pursue annexation. We've been engaging with those residents. And we've heard a lot of desire to be city residents for many reasons. Service delivery, like infrastructure improvements, like city water, but also access to city, city programs at resident rates, things like summer camp for kids through the recreation program. Next slide, please. So over the last, oh, okay, my notes are jumping. Sorry about that. Over the last two years, we've completed the first four phases of work, and we're now we're about to be checking in with the community to confirm that the major recommendations are in line with that community vision and what we've heard along the way. And we're also working on the finalizing of the plan for the implementation pieces. We're going to be opening this engagement window in the, in the next week or so to go into November. We've got a number of events planned in November. That community feedback on the draft recommendations will help shape, shape those final revisions to the plan. And we'll be looking to go back to our planning board and city council and Transportation Advisory Board for adoption early next year. Next slide, please. The draft plan, or what we're calling that 60% community review draft, includes that overall vision for the sub-community, a recommended land use plan and a connections plan. And these deliverables will guide the future development. It will inform zoning changes and capital investments. Next slide. So we've had a lot of community engagement over the last two years. You can see from the numbers, lots of different, lots of folks have participated. We've been all virtual since March of 2020. And in many ways, it's, I think, broadened the scope of engagement of different folks that have been able to participate. We've worked closely with 21 members of our working group that have helped shape the areas of change, the recommendations, and they'll continue to work with us to finalize the plan. One of those working group members is a resident at San Lazaro and has been helping to coordinate the outreach there. Next slide. So we heard in our last engagement window earlier this year, we shared a number of different land use scenarios. And we heard that most of the desire was to balance areas of, areas of change with keeping things the same, really making targeted changes from office or industrial uses to more mixed-use neighborhoods. While a lot of folks were really supportive of mixed use, we also heard a lot about trying to address the critical housing need in Boulder. And folks are really interested in finding ways to add a lot of different types of housing in this area. Other things we heard, be bold. The area is really ready for changes that will help everyone. We heard from the business community both hope for new places in East Boulder to walk to for lunch or for shopping, but also concern about new housing adjacent to some of the industrial uses where there might be negative impacts. And as I mentioned, we heard from the San Lazaro residents interest in annexation for services like city water and other programs. We have had several check-ins with our council and planning board. And a lot of this feedback aligns with where our boards and council are thinking of the future for East Boulder as well. So next slide, please. So the recommended vision is really for the area to evolve in a way that it will continue to thrive as an innovative, working and industrial sub-community, but where there are also new opportunities for living, working, and playing. And it's not, it's not a small idea. It, this vision describes a place that maintains its industrial nature, but really welcomes those new uses, most significantly adding housing. We believe that with the community's input, this draft plan is designed to be really strategic about change, but flexible enough to take advantage of opportunities as they arise. Next slide. So to achieve this vision, these areas outlined in yellow, they are the places where we want to redefine where those, what those land uses are and what they can include to become more complete neighborhoods. And I just, you know, want to mention to keep in mind that it's not the intention of a plan like this to force out or displace beloved or necessary businesses. As a long-term plan, we know that change will happen every time. Redevelopment happens naturally. But by establishing this intention, we can be really thoughtful about how and where the change occurs and really make the places, some great places that benefit the community. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, one of the primary goals is to address how we can add housing. And based on the recommendations that we have in the, in the draft plan, we could expect East Boulder to contribute up to about 4,400 new homes to the city's housing stock. That's in addition to about the, about 5,000 units that are projected currently. The range is entirely dependent on private development. If we think about the, if we consider this with the 25% requirement for, of new residential to be affordable housing, this could contribute up to about 1,100 new permanently affordable homes. And one of our questions that we're going to be asking the community in this next window is, does this go far enough to address the need for housing? And are there other areas where we'd like to think about adding housing? Next slide, please. Additionally, the land use plan maintains a significant amount of land that will be prioritized for industrial use. We made no changes for general industrial land use in East Boulder, so we'll still have a place for those heavier manufacturing sites and those, and those types of businesses. While the recommendations do change, a lot of the, not a lot, but some of the areas of light industrial to mixed use, the intention is to really allow those places to evolve with some more flexibility so that they can integrate residential and retail in a way that supports a really solid network, but keeps those, those opportunities for light industrial. Next slide. So I'm going to jump in next to the three primary areas of change, 55th and Arapahoe, the park side sides of Valmont City Park, East and West, and then the Flatirons Business Park. Next slide, please. The 55th and Arapahoe planning has been done with a higher level of detail in order to really capitalize on the future bus rapid transit. And this area is envisioned as a unique mixed-use center with a blend of neighborhoods serving retail and restaurants, a variety of employment and attainable mixed-income housing that's really highly walkable, bikeable, with great access to transit. There'll be a number of new connections in the area and really focused land use changes to help create that the critical mass of activity that will be useful for the transit service. Next slide, please. The Valmont East and West sides are envisioned to evolve into also mixed-use neighborhoods with that industrial character. But the changes here are focused to help fill that hole in Boulder's missing middle income housing. The housing would be new live-work options, attached homes like townhomes, but also vertically mixed-use business buildings. There are some new street connections to make things easier to navigate and also to better connect with Valmont City Park. Hoping that by adding some more activity and retail options in these areas, that will also help serve the residents that are, that live north of Valmont in those neighborhoods that really don't have anything that they can walk to currently. Next slide, please. Changes from Flatirons Business Park are not that much actually in the, in the center of the park, hoping to add opportunities, evolution for more retail, restaurant, and shopping so that folks can walk or bike short distances, but really focusing new housing in areas that are along the green space or really close to that 55th Street to be able to take advantage of the better transit that will be at, along Arapahoe. And the next slide, please. The draft plan also can, includes a lot of new recommendations for connections. Some of the big moves will be the 2040 vision of Easter Arapahoe transforming one of our city's really busiest travel corridors into a complete street with a lot of different and better travel options. As I mentioned, the cornerstone of this investment will be the high-frequency, high-quality bus, bus rapid transit service that will connect Boulder to both downtown or connect to this area of Boulder to downtown and then east to I-25. Other of the big moves include expanding the hop service into East Boulder, integrating micro-vomability options through East Boulder, so bike and scooter sharing to address that first and last mile and also quick trips, curbside management, and then also the regional mobility hub. So really scattering lots of different mobility improvements throughout this area. As a, as a recap, the, the big ideas for East Boulder are to have a better mix and foster 15-minute walkable mixed-use neighborhoods, more housing of different types, better ways to get around without a car. And a lot of the areas really staying the same to provide the medical and other services, as well as the heavier industrial uses that are really important to our community. So our next slide, Hannah. The engagement opportunities will be upcoming. They are getting planned and posted on our project website. We have some strategic open houses for property owners, businesses, and nearby, nearby residents. Community meeting, middle of November, and we'll also be hosting a lot of this information and strategic questions to help inform changes to the plan on our online platform, Be Heard Boulder. So that I'd be happy to take questions if you have them, or we would be happy to direct you to those resources once they're up next week.
Are there any questions from commissioners or comments?
I have a question. This is Commissioner Goldfarb. On the previous slide in regard to the Arapahoe connections. Yeah, there it is, the connections plan. So the hop transit service expansion, would that, that expansion would be serviced more often? Would the route change at all? And how far out east does it go? And will there be parking out east for people to try and use? I know you mentioned first and last mile. You know, with bikes and that sort of thing, but I think there's got to be some kind of parking, right?
Well, we, we don't, the, the improvements do not include like a parking structure or a facilitated parking facility. The, and I wish that I had more information about that exactly. My counterpart, Jane Sanson, who's our transportation planner, was not able to be with us today. And I may have to circle back with you on, on exactly what the hop improvements are. What I understand is that right now, the negotiations with RTD are about restoring some of the, the routes that were eliminated during, during COVID. And then more of that planning will be happening. I think it will, would connect along 55th and to the Flatirons Business Park, but I would be happy to follow up and shoot a message through Hannah to you to clarify exactly where those, where that anticipated route would be. And I think it sounded like the time, timing for that.
Yeah, that would be great. I'm really concerned about this. It, it seems to me that, you know, in an ideal world, it would be great if people could be able to walk to the bus stop or ride a bike to the bus stop. That's great. And with these connections, perhaps more of that will happen, but I think you're still going to have people who will need to drive a car to get to the bus stop. And I'm concerned that without any sort of facility to accommodate that, that we won't get the maximum usage out of the system.
Totally, yeah, no, totally appreciate that and I recognize it, and I will bring that back to the team.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Libby, I had a question just about, I guess, how this, how you envision this playing out. I like a lot of the maps you showed and the ideas of mixing in new residential areas and, and transit-oriented development, but you know, I noticed that all of the areas that were shaded for future residential are, of course, where things already are right now. Boulder lumber is there. There's a big pharmaceutical plant on 55th. Is the intent of this that you're kind of giving a, a vision to say that if a developer or a private sector person were to buy and propose this, and they were in alignment, and the city would be supportive of this kind of development? Is that basically to give kind of a a structure to fit into where you would know that you had some good chance of passing through development review if it aligned to this?
That's correct. So there are a number of steps. So similar to the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan that was adopted in the, in the 90s. It's really taken 20, 20, you know, it's been 20 years now that that plan has been implemented through redevelopment. So the, the vision, establishing the vision in, in this plan, changing the land use in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan will inform new zoning. And so then once we'll have, we'll have zoning in place that will really be specific to what we're trying to achieve so that, as you say, private property owners will have an idea of what they, what they are, you know, encouraged, allowed to do through that zoning. And so as that, we know that a lot of these properties are aging and that changes will happen. So with that regulatory structure in place, it will inform what those will be in the future, when, when, and if that occurs.
Okay. Any other questions or comments this time?
This is Commissioner McMillan. Just one question. Is there a reason that the study boundary kind of stops at Arapahoe? And the reason I ask is it seems like a lot of the planning and infrastructure that could take place is kind of connecting those areas south of Arapahoe to the commercial corridor and the activity.
Yeah.
Our Arapahoe, just curious.
It's really that we weren't anticipating changes to the residential areas to the south. But we've, but clearly we considered the land uses and what was happening in the areas south of Arapahoe, and that helped inform the, these recommendations. The stationary of planning at 50, at 55th goes just a little bit deeper to the south of Arapahoe and includes a little bit there as, in terms of connections and land uses for that. But we really didn't anticipate the changes to any of the single-family or other residential areas to the south. But given that, in the study and the analysis, we for sure are considering what's down there, what connects to, and, and how those folks that are in those areas will connect up to Arapahoe.
Right. So I don't, I don't, I'm not suggesting any changes to land use myself personally. I just think it's important to find ways to connect all of that together. Sounds like you're doing that, so.
Okay. Well, thank you to Jean and Hannah for the presentation. Hearing no further comments. We'll look forward to the next update as you're further along and really appreciate the chance to review and offer comments.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Our next docket today is a revisit docket SU-21-0005, the Gold Lake Modification. And Summer, go for it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Sorry, Chair Libby. This is a docket SU-210005, Gold Lake Modification. And yes, several of you have seen, we're here for the original approval of this. The request is to modify that special review SU-180020 to allow for alternate distribution of the approved square footage, location and design of structures, alignment of County Road 102, and site access, parking, and traffic circulation. So the internal transportation network. This is located at 3371.
Sharing Summer, sorry.
Oh, am I not?
We're not seeing it.
Sorry.
Sounded like you were speaking to it, so I figured we missed it.
I was. Thank you.
Yep.
Oh.
Looks good.
How now? Okay. So. Let me get back on track here. Okay. So the location is 3371 Gold Lake Road on the north and south side of Gold Lake Road, approximately just over two and a half miles from its intersection with County Road 100. The parcel is approximately 90 acres, is zoned forestry, and is owned by Gold Lake Ventures LLC. The agent today for this application is Stevens Barn of Sofer's Barn Architects. So to give you some context, this is the vicinity map, and I will note that the county parcel lines in this area are shifted somewhat significantly to the west. So as we go through these maps, you will see that the parcel boundaries are offset somewhat. So here's the location map. And you can see here, this is a better indication of how far off the parcel boundaries are. Here's an aerial of the site, and it's likely easier to get the context using this aerial from Google Maps that doesn't have the parcel boundary in it. So here's the comprehensive plan map. You can see on the parcel itself, there are riparian areas and wetlands on the northern portion of the parcel. And then surrounding to the south is the Walker Mountain Environmental Conservation Area, as well as significant natural communities. Again, riparian areas, but those are slightly off the parcel. Public lands, you can see here that the parcel is completely surrounded by US Forest Service-owned property. And so this was referred out to all of the standards, standard agencies and departments. And some of the referral responses, the access and engineering team indicated support for the relocation of County Road 102, the new design of the public and private parking areas and the internal road network. The new design of the public and private parking areas and the internal road network. Their referral response also included specific design standards and restated that. Comments and requirements from the vacation application, V eighteen zero 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 seven. And SU eighteen zero zero two zero remain in effect. The wildfire mitigation team indicated that this modification did not change. Their referral response from the previous. SU docket. Our natural resource planner indicated support for the realignment of the county road within the parcel. The reduction in number of proposed structure, structures and the relocation and reduction in parking roundabout and parking area. There were no concerns with the realignment of the internal road network. The proposed deconstruction of specific buildings and design changes related to the structures within the historic area. The referral response did highlight the fact that the lodge is currently the only two story structure on the parcel. And expressed concerns related to the proposed changes in the bulk and mass of proposed structures NC five. NC eleven and NC twelve. As well as the relocation of new cabins and the owner's cabin higher on the hill slope as locations will increase. The visibility to the US Forest Service own land on the western lake shore. Public health noted that the OWTS on the subject property are considered. Commercial systems so that a change of use permit is required. OWTS permits must be issued prior to any permits being issued by community planning and permitting. And the OWTS must be installed, inspected and approved prior to community planning and permitting. Final inspection or certificate of occupancy issuance. Additionally, an EPA classified injection well permit or proof that that well permit is not required. Must be submitted to Boulder County Public Health. And. A retail food establishment license is required. And the applicant must determine if a non-community groundwater public service system license is required. Building Safety and Inspection Services Team, their referral response was relatively standard. Requiring building permits, grading permits for each individual structure. However, they did point out that in addition to the two thousand fifteen International Building Code. The two thousand fifteen International Green Construction Code is also applicable to the proposed development. And they also provided additional information related to specifics of the proposal. And indicated that written documentation from the Indian Peaks Fire Protection District. Approving any submitted building permit plans and specifications must be submitted. To community planning and permitting prior to the issuance of any building permits. The Historic Review Team. Their referral response indicated that a subcommittee of the Historic Preservation Advisory Board reviewed. Docket CA two one dash zero zero one two Gold Lake Mountain Resort. And SU dash twenty one dash zero 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 five, the Gold Lake Modification. And unanimously approved the two to one certificate of appropriateness for proposed changes. Within the historic area as submitted and gave their support for the special review. XL Energy just indicated that they do have services in the area. And that the applicant prior to construction. Needs to contact the utility notification center. The application materials included a letter from the Indian Peaks Fire Protection District. Stating approval of any access improvements leading to existing structures. For adjacent property owners, thirty one notices were sent out and no comments were received by staff. There is a list of agencies that did not respond or responded with no conflict. And so giving a little bit more background on where we are right now, what you see now is. The previously approved site plan that was included with the. Development agreement that was recorded with the clerk and recorder's office. As was required for the previous special review approval. The what you see are the. Parking lot layout, this is the private parking lot layout. This is the public parking lot layout. The. Approved realignment for County Road one oh two. And then you see existing and proposed structures. That what you see in dark blue are new structures. Light blue, such as over here, are additions to existing structures. Yellow. Are those are the contributing structures to the historic landmark area. And then purple indicates that the existing structure is to be remodeled. So again, here is a little bit closer and you will see from this. What this site plan, you can't see any. Structures down here in the southeastern corner, however, this is. Also a site plan and you can see that there were two structures here in the southeast corner. That were approved through the previous special review. So just for more context, this area that's outlined in the red dashed line. Which is here and then this number one structure here is the landmarked area that was approved. Along with the previous special review. So this is the proposed site plan right now. And again, the current applicant has used the same. Color scheme in order to indicate new structures, addition to structures, contributing structures. And structures that are to be remodeled, however, they're none shown here. Well, there's one, I'm sorry, down here. That's the pump house. And then the brown areas are decks. So here's a side by side comparison of what was approved and what was proposed. I will note that the. Site plan on the left that says approved is cut off here at the bottom and does not include. Those two structures down here in the southeast corner, but those were approved through the previous special review. So you can see from this side by side, the public parking area has been reconfigured. Private parking area has been reconfigured. Structures here on the northern shore area have been aligned with each other and they're and reconfigured. The two new cabins that were shown here at the bottom of the meadow have been moved over and clustered. Closer to the existing structures and the landmark area. There's been some reconfiguration of the structures. Just adjacent to the landmarked area. And then you can see that there are new structures proposed here in the southeast area as well as. An addition and new construction associated with cabin thirteen. So this is a little bit difficult for you to see. This is the previously approved structure sizes from the previous. Approval, obviously, and this, but to pull from this, there are thirty one buildings approved at for a total of. Thirty four thousand seven hundred and sixty three square feet. And then the proposed breakdown for the structures are thirty buildings and thirty four thousand nine hundred and ninety nine square feet. So jumping into the criteria review, this was reviewed against the criteria found in Article four dash six zero one A. And I will hit the highlight highlights. I won't go through all of the criteria. Number one is that the proposal will comply with the minimum zoning requirements of the zoning district. A resort lodge, which this is as defined in Article four dash five zero seven D. Are allowed in the forestry zoning district by special review. All applicable permits are required and those are building permits, grading permits. Stormwater quality permits, for example. All uses and construction must comply with applicable standards, conditions of approval and requirements. Such as the fire code, building code or state licensing. And later on, I will get into Article four dash six zero two C. Which are special provisions for a special review for community uses or lodging and lodging uses. So number two is. To summarize is that the proposal will be compatible with the surrounding area. So as I said, the area is completely encompassed by Forest Service land. There are residential properties farther to the west and farther to the north. And those are pretty indicative of mountain developments. Some small lots, some large lots, houses located closer to the roads. With a few located on the larger lots located closer to the interior of the parcel. So the majority of the proposed development is clustered in either here in the north, northern part of the northern shore of the lake or. In conjunction with this historic landmarked area. The proposed relocation of the structures in the area above the. Excuse me, above the southeastern shore are on higher slopes and in areas. In an area that was previously anticipated to be free from development. And that area is generally outlined in the with this red box. And so getting into this a little bit more here on the left, you have zoomed in. On the approved site plan and the structures that were approved. Previously, you can see that they were to be located closer to the the existing and proposed to be improved. Extension of the interior road here, this purple structure here is the pump house. For the existing in-ground. Hot tubs that are between the shoreline and the the road. And then here on the right, you have the proposed and you can see that the structures are moved higher on the slope. And then this owner's cabin number NC twelve is moved significantly far up. The hillside and I've put boxes, yellow boxes around the three existing historic. Buildings as well as the pump house so that you can have some context when we move into this and this is. The map that shows the contours and you can see that this contour right here, which is right above the pump house is eighty six forty. And then the slope is relatively steep up to a flatter area where the the owner's cabin is proposed to be located. And it is, you know, just below the ridge line of or this major contour line of eighty six seventy. So and these these contours are five foot contours, just for context. So not only is the location different, but the bulk and the mass of the structures have also changed. Here in the chart, you see the approved square footage for each of these cabins. On the top and then the proposed square footage. I will note that this chart was also in your staff recommendation. And this number right here for NC five was incorrect. It was listed as a lower number, approximately five hundred square feet. And so this is the correct. Square footage. So these three structures were approved to equal three thousand four hundred and forty four. Square feet and as proposed now equal four thousand nine hundred and seventy eight square feet. And so for this criteria, staff supports the size and location of those structures located on the northern shore, the eastern area and within. The historic area. But staff does not support the size and location of the structures along the southeastern shoreline. Specifically NC five, NC six and NC twelve. And staff has recommended a condition of approval reflecting that. Criteria number four is the use will not result in an over intensive use of land or excessive depletion of natural resources. This map that you're seeing. Here on the right is pulled from one of the maps that is included in the recorded development agreement. The area that is along the shoreline that is outlined in the yellow dash. Mine was identified as the sensitive lake shore area. And in the current proposal. Proposed development associated with the peaceful circle, which flipping back here. Is up here, you see it generally in this yellow hatched area. The proposed, the proposal shows that development extending all the way to the shoreline. And into that sensitive area and so to ensure that the sensitive area remains. Undeveloped and untouched, staff recommends a condition of approval that any development associated with this peaceful circle. Be pulled twenty five feet from the high water line for the lake shore. Criteria number nine, this is the the development will be adequately buffered or screened to mitigate any undue visual impacts. Of the use. Again, the area, as I said, is surrounded by Forest Service land. And the area that staff has a particular. Issues with is again, this the proposed development in this southeastern area that's shown inside this red box. This area to the west is all Forest Service land. And along here, you can see that Forest Service Road three seventy two. Runs through this area and then loops down to the south and then continues. This area also includes various trails, dispersed camping sites. And the road is open to hikers, horseback riders, bicyclists, skiers and dirt bike, car and snowmobile traffic. So most of the proposed development is not visible from the adjacent land. But those structures that are proposed to be higher on the slope side will be more prominent in the view shed. And the previously approved size and location are more in line. With the overall mountain resort character as well as being located along that road. So there will, there was intended to be a significant portion of hillside above those. And. We have several photographs that indicate this. This is a section. Of the aerial of the southern portion of the lake. You can see that the Forest Service Road comes in. You can also see several. Trails that run through this area. The stars are locations where the the photographs that I'm about to show you were taken. These red dots are various dispersed camping sites that are frequently used. And so again, with some context, this is the proposed site plan. And then these are boxes that show those structures. And then for context, the pump house here as well. So the again, here are the structure, the historic structures, the proposed area, the pump house. These orange circles are where the in-ground hot tubs are located. And this green one is there's a TP structure. So this is walking along the trail and the arrow is pointing to the hillside and actually I'll go back. To this one, you can see that if you look at the vegetation and how that breaks up. These propose the proposed two structures, NC five and NC six. Are located in this general vegetated area and then the vegetation starts to break up. And the owner's cabin NC twelve is proposed to be located higher on the slope. So looking across the lake, this arrow points to the general area of the proposed structures. You can see. The vegetation and then how it starts to break up. And this is the trail that I'm standing on taking this picture from. And this is pointing south on the trail and this trail extends along and traveling along. This rope and these signs indicate the property boundary. So again, this is looking east towards that hillside. And again, this is the trail that I'm standing on taking this photograph. And again, the trail here, you can see that the property boundary goes through the lake actually. And so the trail does extend down to the lake shore in this area and looks across to that hillside. And this is zoomed in and you can see over here some of that TP structure and then the road runs along here. And then this is one of the dispersed camping sites that is relatively close to the lake shore and the trail. Continues through this site and extends here sort of to the southeast. And again, this is farther, this is almost to the very southern point of the lake. The trail comes into this open area and looks out over to this hillside. And that's a zoom in of the hillside. And again, you can see the in-ground hot tubs are located in this area. And here's the road along here. And this is the slope that we're discussing. And then you can see here that the trails continue. And then over here up in the sort of mid-left of the photograph is the dam. That is the, at the very sou- sou- southeasterly portion of the lake. And so again, staff recommends conditions of approval requiring that NC cabins, NC five, NC six and NC 12. Remain in the originally approved locations at the, and the, at the originally approved sizes. So that they stay in character with kind of the mountain resort feel. And also so that the visual impacts of structures in that area are mitigated as much as possible. So this is the special provisions that are found in four dash six zero two C two. And this is where the maximum amount of square footage that is allowed on parcels is dictated. So the subject property is approximately 90 acres in size. And so that means that there's a maximum allowed floor area on the subject property of 35,000 square feet. And so the proposal is for no more than 34,999 square feet. So staff found that the proposal did meet this criteria. And so with that summary and as detailed in the staff recommendation. With the exception of the proposed increase in size and relocation of the new cabins. And the owner's cabin in the area above the southeastern shoreline. Community planning and permitting staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of docket SU 21 dash zero 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 five. The Gold Lake Modification Special Review and Site-Specific Development Plan. Subject to the recommended conditions of approval found in the staff recommendation. And I have those conditions of approval on subsequent sides if needed for discussion. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Summer. What questions, topics do we have?
This is Mark Bloomfield, Commissioner Bloomfield. I just wanted to say, I meant to say at the beginning before the presentation. That Sofa Sparrow was a former client of mine. I have since sold the company and have no financial interest, but I just want to have that on the record. I don't see it impacting my judgment.
Okay, thanks, Mark. Any questions for Summer before we get to the applicant presentation?
This is Commissioner Shu. I have a question about the process here. So if we approve this, does that completely make the previous approval void? Like it's completely replaced by whatever we approved today?
So in the conditions of approval, and I can, so. Recommended conditions of approval, one through 11 are specific to this proposal. And then conditions 12 through, I believe, 43, 45. Were conditions of approval that were previously approved, but are not changed by this. Application, so they, by incorporating them into your staff recommendation and this application. It preserves all of the approvals and conditions of approval that were associated with the previous docket.
Okay, so one question I have then. Is that there is NC 13 from the previous approval. That was approved, but it disappears in this one, so.
So actually.
It can. Yeah, what does that mean for NC 13?
So you're speaking of the, let me actually, sorry, get back to. Here we go, so this, so you're speaking of this structure here. This actually is now NC four. So it was relocated up here.
Okay, so then there would be. I guess one thing I'm having problems with understanding is exactly what the final format, for, for, uh, final plan is. And you know, at least for the next presentation, it'd be nice to have something where this is what is. Expected, so like, I guess NC 13 is gone, but then NC. Four or five, six and 12 are going to be the same as before.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes.
And we have NC 13 moved to NC four.
Yep, so there, and, and there is one less structure proposed in this application. So previously there were 31 structures and now there are 30 structures.
Okay, and then one, when it goes to. You know, the staff's recommended approval. What is the square footage of all those buildings?
Of all 30 of the buildings? Or of the ones in the southern, southern?
Of, of all three buildings.
So that was. So it would be this except for NC five, NC six and NC 12. So those would revert to the square footages that were previously approved. And that is shown in, lots of flipping back, this right here, so up here.
So it'd be different by roughly 1,500, so it'd be 1,500. So 34,999 minus roughly 1,500 square feet, okay. Okay, I think that's, oh, one other question, and maybe this will be for the applicant. But that peaceful circle, like that development underneath it, what, what is that?
I believe it is a cleared area with a circle and of seating, seating area here. And there's a trail that leads in and out of it. And I think the applicant can probably give you more specifics.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I have some questions regarding the, the sort of dispute around relocating the owner's cabin. I, I guess it seems to me like there is some benefit, like we're trying to push. Development away from the lake. So it seems like that. Moving the owner's cabin seems to help with that. I'm also, I'm a little confused, yeah, I've actually been to the site, both to the actual lodge and to the dispersed camping across the way. And I'm a little confused, you know, your, your pictures looked good summer, but then the applicant's proposal also has. Pictures that seem to indicate that it will actually be, this, the site impact will actually be reduced. So I'm just curious if you can speak a little bit more to that and staff's thought process there.
Sure, so I don't know if you remember the original proposal, but these two, and actually. Might be better shown. Using this, so if the, these two, the, the original or one of the proposals made by the previous applicants. Were to locate NC 13 and NC 12 right here along the shoreline.
Right.
And so staff, because of that sensitive area, because this is, you know, a slope down to the lakeshore. And staff is interested in keeping the development out of this area. The, then the applicants proposed to move it on this side, on, on the, the eastern side of the road. And that is where staff, staff had suggested they move it to. One, because it was outside of that area in between the lakeshore and the road. Yet they were still located relatively close to that road. And so there didn't need to be, you know, more development of the road or access to these parcels. Than what you see here, I'm sorry, not parcel structures, than what you see here. So pulling it away from the lake was really intended to get it out of that area. Structures out of that area between the shoreline and the road. So, you know, the location where they were previously approved was agreed upon by staff. Because it kept in line with the other two proposed structures. They would be relatively low. Structures and they would be backdroped by the hillside. So moving the structures farther up the slope will, and then increasing the size, the bulk and mass of those structures. Will put them more prominently into the view shed and it will also require more. Removal of trees for wildfire mitigation, they're, they won't, they won't have to review, remove all of the trees, but it will be significantly thinned. And so, you know, it will, that, that will increase the visibility on this hillside. Does that answer your question? Did I miss something?
No, I think that's good, especially the thinning of the trees I hadn't thought about.
Yeah.
Commissioner McMillan can ask a follow-up question. You say that the trees will have to be thin, do you mean for fire mitigation or for fire mitigation?
Well, for fire mitigation and then also for construction of the, of the structures.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, one more question if I may, Summer. The, the road, actually what you have up there looks like the road that goes down to the south. That, does that continue like to the dam?
It does.
Okay, so.
Yes, yes.
Most of the drawings, it kind of ends, but I guess that's.
Yeah, here. Sorry, I'm flipping back and forth, I think. The aerial that I used before we get into, here we go. So you can see it runs here. Then along, and then this straight area is the dam. So it remains because it is how they access for maintenance.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure in terms of the overall development.
Yep, and the Forest Service Road actually, so the, the outfall of the lake is right here. And the Forest Service Road crosses that outfall stream, but. And there is, there is actually a dispersed camping site on the other side. But then it kind of, it becomes impassable by vehicles, but. Horses and pedestrians and dirt bikes can continue on a trail that then connects up to Gold Lake Road, which is located on the Forest Service. So it makes sort of a big giant loop. And then continues east towards Jamestown.
Thanks.
Commissioner Libby, I had a couple of quick questions. I just sent some of the changes from the previous plan on the road realignment of CR 109 or whatever it was. There was originally a horse area that was relocated, I'm not sure if that still exists in the new plan. As well as, yeah, that new parking area, it's kind of a different alignment, right?
Yep, so the horse area is not shown here. And that would be a good question for the applicants.
Okay, and then the other question I had was around the peaceful circle. Looking at the satellite imagery right now, it looks like the, there's an existing kind of firefight circle there.
Yep.
Is that within 25 feet already? So would this prevent any improvement to that?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so the idea is basically the lighter gray addition of whatever that seating is closer to the water. Would not be approved by this because in the 25-foot area.
Correct.
Okay, thanks, that's it. Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? Okay, thanks, Summer.
All right, thank you.
Let's go ahead and hear from the applicant or agents.
Hello, Chair Libby, this is Anna Milner's staff, I'll be promoting the applicants here in a moment, just give me one second.
Mr. Sparn, we can, we can see and hear you, sounds good. Yep.
Great, thank you very much here, let me just get organized here a little bit. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Commissioners, it's good to be here. My name is Stephen Sparn and I am Principal Architect at Sofa Sparrow Architects, 1731 15th Street in Boulder. I'm very pleased to be here today. With me today is David Brand, who is Managing Partner of the Gold Lake Ownership Group. David will making some concluding remarks and share comments from Bhavani Lev, who's unable to attend. Additionally, senior, senior architect and associate Kylie Bam, who's been our leading. Our team of architects and consultant is also with us. Since staff is in general support of most of our proposal, I'm, will only touch briefly on the overall project and focus. Most of this presentation on the three buildings of where we and staff are not in full alignment. I'd like to now, if you would share your screen, Kylie. Great, hang on.
We can see that, it's good.
Great. Thank you, as an architect has been practicing architecture and planning in Boulder for more than four decades. I've not often had an opportunity to work on a property as pristine and special as Gold Lake. And with clients who have such sustainable goals for preserving and protecting this property. We're truly honored to work on this project. Slide two, please. Our team has been working hard over the past year, creating new and improved site plans to meet the requirements of Boulder County. And as referral agencies to begin to bring this project to fruition. Is our hope to begin construction in the spring of 2022. You're reviewing the previously approved site plan showing a massive parking lot with buildings randomly paced across the site. Next slide, please. We've been closely working with Boulder County Planning, Historic Preservation, Open Space, Transportation, Public Health, Wildfire Partners, Indian Peaks Fire Protection. To effectively meet their individual and common needs and requirements. As I believe you are aware, there currently is a development agreement on this property recorded January of 21. Our task was to simply employ the best practice, sustainable land planning and design services to bring this project to fruition. It's important to note here, we are not seeking any changes to the previously approved intensities. We are maintaining the same uses, same square footage limitations and special event restriction. Next slide, please. Our goal was simply to reduce the environmental impacts on the property. We are creating better designed roads and parking lots with substantially reduced amounts of cut and fill and earth moving. We are creating two compact guest villages to minimize environmental impacts. We are designing compact, energy efficient and architecturally sensitive buildings. We're locating cabins to minimize cut and fill throughout a careful slope analysis. We are moving buildings away from the sensitive lakefront area. We are creating an effective wire, wildfire defense plan while preserving a majority of the legacy of the ponderosa pines in the villages. Next slide, please. We are creating building designs that are compact, energy efficient and architecturally compatible with this mountain environment. We are lovingly restoring and preserving historic cabins. Excuse me here. I'm going to quickly scroll through some of the renderings on the property. To give you a feel of the architectural language that we have developed. We believe these buildings are in keeping with the historic and cultural landscape of the site. This is the great lodge, we are restoring the original lodge and creating a new entrance kitchen dining area. This and all the historic buildings were reviewed and approved by HPAD. Next slide, please. Here we have the welcome lodge, the building where guests first arrive at the retreat center. Next slide, please, this is the wellness center where guests can receive health treatments and take classes, practice yoga. We have split the center into two buildings to reinforce the cabin feel of the East Village. By the way, all of these buildings meet fire restrictive codes and have been reviewed and approved by Historic Preservation. By the way, all of these buildings meet fire restrictive codes and have been reviewed and approved by Historic Preservation Advisory Board. Next slide, please. This is the sacred gathering space where guests can meet, meditate, practice yoga and hold group events. Again, we have varied the massing to break down the scale of our buildings. Next slide, please. Here's a typical historic cabin restoration where we're adding a modest addition to the side. Next side, please. This is a fourplex, one of our larger footprints of the cabins. However, it is one story. Roughly a thousand square feet and has a ridge height of sixteen feet. Next slide, please. This cabin is NC six, which is one of the cabins in question. It's a triplex cabin that staff is calling into question for its size in the southeast portion of the site. We believe its character and size are appropriate for this location. I'd like you to note that its ridge height is fourteen foot seven off of the finished floor. Next slide, please. This is the fourplex family cabin known as NC five, which staff has concerns. This cabin was designed to accommodate families and has a small shared living room and was designed with a wraparound building porch. To reduce its scale. It has a built, building height of eighteen foot one. Three foot six taller than the previous building. It has a footprint of only nine hundred and twenty-five square feet. With about fourteen hundred total square feet. It's a compact cabin with a light footprint. Next slide, please. This is NC twelve, which is the owner's cabin, which we believe should be located away from the sensitive lakefront. We have located it on the flatter portion of the site to the north of the approved location. This site is not on top of a ridge, which we will illustrate later. This building is two thousand seven hundred and forty-six square feet in size with a roof height of twenty-three feet ten. Off of the finished floor. Next side, please. Now. This is the current owner's residence, which will be demolished. I'm showing you this image because it was stated in the referrals and Summer also stated that there are no two buildings on the site. This building is a two-story building with a roof height of twenty-four foot six inches. And is approximately twenty-three hundred square foot in size. So this is what we're demolishing, but it's the current owner's residence. Next slide, please. This is an important slide. This is our wildfire protection slide. We have worked closely with Kyle McCady of Welfare Partners and have created a, an approved wildfire. Mitigation plan to protect the Gold Lake Retreat Center from wildfires. This is a critical element in our plan because it significantly reduces our fire danger. And it also preserves the legacy pine trees throughout the site. This wildfire mitigation strategy was developed based on appropriate measures for the property within defensible space zones. Location of zone one fire breaks creates thirty-foot clear vegetation zones where there are no tree canopy. They are shown in a network of green pathways and generally follow the road network and surround the buildings on site. The result is it will allow the buildings and trees within that stone, that zone to be protected as one structure. This is important. This will allow us to maintain the natural. The, the historic nature of the property and allow us to continue to blame the cabins within the forest within zone one fire breaks. Zone two areas are shown as blue toned areas and project out three hundred feet around the villages. Zone two fire areas require that fuel loads for approaching fires be reduced by specific measures. Those majors include tree thinning, reduction in surface fuels. And protection of flammable materials, as can be seen, some of the zone two areas fall within the US Forest Service lands. The US Forest Service is cooperating with us in this tree thinning effort. And then to the northwest of the village is a large stand of lodgeful pines. We are creating thirty-foot firebreak stripes in the large stand of these pines to slow the movement of wildfire. While making the forest healthier. We've worked hard on this fire protection strategy and believe this helped us protect the buildings on site. While pervert, preserving the historic and cultural landscape of the site. By maintaining the majority of the lovely legacy ponderosa pines throughout the site. Please note, the buildings in the southeast portion of the site, which is protected by zone one fire break that include. NC five, six and twelve. Now, um, now let us focus. On the East Village final plan. Um, let's focus on the portion of the site where we're not in full agreement with staff's analysis. Staff has stated that they have concerns with the size and locations of three buildings. NC five, six and twelve. NC, by the way, just stands for new construction. We would like to present our analysis of the decision to locate these buildings on this slide. I should state here that we've been working collegially with staff and they have encouraged us to bring forward this analysis for the planning commission's review. Nothing presented here today is a surprise to staff. Our team believes that our proposed plan with the location and sizes in the buildings are appropriate and are. And the best solution when taking into consideration the land use criteria for approval. Next slide, please. I know you know this, I'm going to touch on it really quickly, but I'd like to just. Let you know that we always keep criteria section four dash six oh one, A, two and four in mind when we design. Our, our analysis compares the previously approved location and sizes to our proposed locations and sizes. We will be looking at, and of course I'm paraphrasing, we're looking at locations of structures. Size and height and massing of structures, the number and arrangement of structures, the proposed removal of vegetation. We study the extent of site disturbance, including grading and changes in the national topography. We are sensitive to scenic vistas and mountainous trains and we look at techniques to adequately. Buffer screen to mitigate any undue visual pack, uh, impacts of use. And we are constantly seeking the appropriate balance between current and future economic. Excuse me, I'm here. Energy materials, water, land and other finite resources. We believe that our solution best complies with this criteria. Next slide, please. This is a simple conceptual slide graphically showing how we site plan and design buildings. To have less impact and to provide better energy efficiency. Site grading is important to minimize impacts on the land. Quite simply, steeper slopes require more grading and excavation. Shallow slopes require less grading. Um, where possible, we prefer flatter sites. We're going to show you some slope analysis diagrams that we use to help us design better. Massing and energy efficiency are also important. Building volumes when connected use less energy. Due to less exterior envelope area exposed to the environment and have smaller footprints. Where possible, we cluster residential units. To provide better energy efficiency and less total footprint. We studied building groupings. Building space closer to one another reduce the amount of infrastructure required. Incurrence and concentrate the land disturbance leaving more undisturbed. We have created two compact villages, the East Village and the West Village. Next slide, please. Now let's talk about the. Let's talk about the location. Of the location and size of buildings when comparing approved versus proposed. I should note that this is a slope analysis topography map. Orange is steeper and yellow and white are flatter. The currently approved NC twelve and thirteen are located at the front in a highly visible adjacent area adjacent to the lake frontage. NC twelve and thirteen are approved for two thousand four hundred and five square feet. And sixteen hundred and eighty square feet respectively for a total of four thousand eighty-five of approved square footage. Along the lake frontage. This slide also shows two different views of the potential massing of these buildings. View two looks north from the dam area towards the approved location. Of NC twelve and thirteen. As can be seen, these locations are extremely visible and closer to the sensitive lakefront area. View three illustrates that these buildings are also visible looking west as well. Next slide. So let's specifically talk about the proposed location of NC twelve. In our proposal, we eliminated NC thirteen and to be clear. Summer was not exactly correct. We did not move NC thirteen to NC four. We have a NC four. We've always had an NC four. We simply eliminated NC thirteen. And we located NC twelve at the flatter portion of the site. Substantially reducing the amount of land disturbance while moving it further from the lakefront. So essentially, we eliminated four thousand eighty-five square feet of lakefront development. And moved two thousand seven hundred and forty-five square feet to the flat part of the site. This site is located off an existing road needed to provide fire protection to the historic cabin thirteen. Let's talk visibility. I would like to point out here that the proposed location is not. A prominent and visually exposed ridge site. In fact, the hill continues climbing to the north behind this. Uh, at least minimum of nine feet higher. Actually, looking at Summer's topo, it looked more like fifteen feet higher. Higher than our finished floor level. There's also a second ridge behind it that's twenty-seven feet higher. This building does not break the ridge line and is surrounded by preserved forest within the fire breaks. Additionally, this NC twelve further away from the sensitive lakefront and clusters it closer into the East Village. Importantly, this allows us to reduce the length of the lakefront road, further reducing impacts. The, by the way, the road out to the dam is nothing more for road, uh, dam maintenance and it's not, uh, used. In the conjunction of the operation of, of the resort area. Next slide, please. Next, I would like to discuss the development impacts in this zone. This table shows a comparison of square footage and grading impacts between the approved and proposed site locations. For reasons I do not know, um, staff did not include NC thirteen in their table. I think it rightly needs to be in the table. Take, this table illustrates that we have actually decreased the amount of square footage in this portion of the site by thirteen hundred and forty square feet. Additionally, we have substantially reduced the cut and fill by over. A thousand cubic yards by moving NC twelve to the flat part of the site. Um, I know the question's going to come up, so I might as well address it. In the original submission, um, we discovered that the footprints were out of scale in the original submission, which we had nothing to do with. These are actually the actual sizes of the footprints that have been approved. Next slide, please. I'm now going to show you offsite views of our proposed NC twelve location from three different locations. These are very similar to Summer's. Few one shows the East Village from the west side of the lake in US Forest Service property. This is the view from fourteen hundred feet away. You will note how exposed and visible the previously approved site of NC twelve is when compared to our proposed site. And by the way, the trees that are shown in these renderings will remain. Based on, these will remain based on the approved fire mitigation plan that we have with welfare partners. Next slide, please. View two is from the dam to the south and is eleven hundred feet from the approved and proposed NC twelve site. Again, it shows how exposed the original NC twelve site is. Slide twenty-four, okay, next view. View three is looking northwest towards NC twelve and it is nine hundred feet away. That's our property fence right there. So, next slide, please. So we strongly believe the size and locations that we have proposed for NC five, six and twelve. Meet the criteria for approval of section four dash six oh one, A, two in the Boulder Land Use Code. The locations of the building have been carefully located to minimize the impact and reduce visibility. The size and height and massing of the buildings have been developed to provide the best balance of energy efficiency while minimizing impact on the land. The number and arrangement of structures are appropriate. We are providing one less structure than was approved. We have carefully considered the removal of all vegetation, including trees, both to mitigate wildfires while preserving. Legacy pines. Our proposal substantially reduces the site disturbance across the entire site, including the areas of NC five, six and twelve. We have demonstrated the scenic visa, visa, sorry, this is our preserve respecting the adjoining US Forest Service lands. We have demonstrated that our uses are adequately buffer, particularly when moving buildings away from the sensitive lakefront area. And finally, we believe the best balance. This project best balances future economic, environmental and societal needs by minimizing. Consumption and energy efficient use of energy. And, um. Excuse me here. Materials, water, land and other finite resources. We are preserving this legacy project for generations by landmarking historic buildings. And creating a sustainable development with a light footprint on the earth. Next slide, please. So here is applicant's request here. So in conclusion, we would like to respect, as the. Commission, the planning commission to adopt staff's recommended approval of docket SU twenty-one oh five, but amend the conditions two, three. To read as presented below. These conditions simply remove the staff statement. This says except for structures labeled NC five, six and twelve. And then condition four, we have referenced the site plan dated. September twenty-eighth, uh, two thousand twenty-one. Final slide. And finally, should planning commission find it desirable? We would be willing to even move NC twelve to the northwest by fifty-five feet as shown on this slide, which would drop the finished floor elevation of NC twelve. By another six feet. We will leave this open for consideration. And now I'd like to introduce managing partner David Brand, who will conclude with a brief statement. Thank you. And by the way, this presentation was sent to Summer, Kim and Anna Milner.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen.
So just, just a minute, David. Rick, I think that's a twenty minute timer. Is that right?
Yes, this is Rick Cacke staff. That was twenty minutes for applicant time.
Okay, are we able to extend past that for a short statement? Is that okay?
Uh, yes, I believe that it's a cherished question.
Okay, let's, let's give it a three, three to five minutes, David, if you can be, be brief. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you commissioners for the opportunity to meet with you today. I think what I'd like to do is read into the record a letter from Gold Lake's primary owner. Holly B. Lev, which I think reflects our unwavering and non-negotiable core values. So, so I think it's important just to get a sense of. Where we're coming from as an owners group. So this is from Holly B. Lev. To the Honorable Planning Commissioners. My dear friend, the late Jack Ruane, a resident of Boulder for decades. Took me up to Gold Lake on a beautiful October weekend in two thousand and six. I immediately fell in love with the lake, the trees and the sanctity of the whole place. In walking around the lake, I felt called to stay connected to that magical place. And as a result of this call, I became the primary owner of Gold Lake shortly after that first visit. After all these years of spending sacred time at Gold Lake. A beautiful vision emerged to renovate the buildings and create a retreat center. So that many people could come and benefit from the peace sanctity and renewal. That almost automatically happens by just being there. Then last year, my partner David Brand and I received an approved DA. We immediately enhanced and expanded our team to ensure that the plans were in full alignment with our dreams. Of honoring the natural sacredness and pristine beauty of the land. Our dream was to have less buildings close to the lake. And very few seen while taking the sacred journey around this glorious lake. Our new plans, designed together with our esteemed architects from Sofer Sparn. Have created more openness around the lake so people can enjoy the purity of walking around the lake. Or while sitting on Nywatz Rock without seeing parking lots or many houses. But only a lovely little village designed in harmony with the historic law cabins and historic lodge. And mostly with nothing to distract from watching the play of light upon the lake. The eagles and osprey flying low over the glistening water. Or the serene stillness of the lake's mirrored surface reflecting the Rocky Mountains in the quiet of an evening. Our commitment to build the most environmentally friendly retreat center. To facilitate a deep connection with the lake, the land and the trees. And the magnificent mountains is why we have. and the magnificent mountains is why we have brought this revised plan to your attention. We thank you for taking the time to deeply consider our request to improve and enhance the glorious experience of being at Gold Lake. With gratitude and blessings, Holly B. Lev. And in all respect to the planning commissioners, I'll just end by saying the modifications before you today are a consequence of some remarkable diligent work by our team. I've been involved in all these discussions and I can say with all my heart that are, that they are across the board enhancement to the original development agreement and create a win for the development plan, a win for Boulder County, a win for those who will experience Gold Lake, and a win for those outside the property. And again, thank you for your consideration today.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for the applicant from the commissioners?
Uh, this is Commissioner Shu. I just want to confirm that applicant is okay with the condition number five regarding development away from the lakeshore for peaceful circle?
Uh, yes, we are.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McMillan, just one question about the two roads leading to the area that we've been discussing. Do they change as compared to original? The original proposal versus now? Or are they still the same length and duration as they were originally posed?
Is that? That is questioned to me.
Uh, sorry, yeah, to the applicant, I, I, uh.
Sorry. Yes, these roads are the road leading to the yellow thirteen on the right. I'm, I'm not certain if I've got your question quite right, but um, the road leading to the historic cabin thirteen will need to be widened slightly to provide fire. So we get a fire truck to that historic cabin thirteen. Did I answer that question right? Or were you talking about the one oh, County Road one oh two?
No, that you got the first half of my question, right? So that, that road will be the same length, but perhaps a touch wider to thirteen. And then the road to the south, that's the road, or the, sorry, the west, that's the road that goes to the dam right now, correct?
Yes, if we were to develop NC, the two, uh, NC twelve and thirteen down there, we would have to widen that right, that road wider. Um, if we do not put the development down there, we will not need to widen it to provide a, in fact, that fire turnaround won't have to be there. Is my understanding. Kylie, would you agree to that statement?
Uh, that's correct. This is Kylie Bannett's over sparring at seventeen thirty-one fifteenth street. Uh, we would be able to reduce that length, Commissioner Shu, to the proximal location of the pump house, so we could reduce development even further.
Okay, thanks. That answered my question.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Could you please put the slide up that shows the road, roads that we're discussing as they will be in your proposed changes?
Is this the slide that you were looking to see? Where we were was a pretty good slide, the, the original, the applicant's proposal. But is this commissioner, is this showing you what you wanted to see?
This is the revised, is that correct?
This is the rise. So, so this, what this slide shows is, what it graphically shows is we eliminated NC thirteen.
Right.
We, and we moved the density from NC twelve up to the flat part of the site. Yeah, we would be able to not have to widen the road and do a fire truck turnaround if we don't do those two buildings at that location.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any further questions for the applicant? For public comment. Okay, thank you for presentations. Um, and I believe there are still no signups either in the chat or prior to the meeting. So we'll just look for people to either unmute on the phone, or if you do wish to speak, please put your name in the chat. Otherwise, we'll move on. A public comment. I'll leave about fifteen seconds for that. Okay, hearing no interest from the public to comment. Um, I will give us a chance to ask any further questions to staff or will allow staff to make statement following that. Any further questions for staff? It's the applicant's presentation. And hearing none, Summer, do you have any responses to the applicant's questions or statements?
Um, I just have two. The first one being that the heights of the proposed cabins that were shown in the applicant's presentation were shown from finished first floor grade and the county measures um, height from existing grade. And the proposed structures do have a stone skirt and the finished floor grade is elevated above existing grade. Um, and the height of the existing owner's cabin was taken from existing grade. So that was shown at, at twenty-four feet, I believe. Um, so it's just a, a little bit of a clarification on how the county measures height versus what was shown. And I will acknowledge that two things, actually two things. One, the owner's cabin, uh, the front facade is a two-story facade. Um, it is built into the hillside, so it is another structure that has an area that is two, two stories tall besides the lodge. Um, and then, uh, as Stephen pointed out, um, they are reducing the number of structures from thirty, from thirty-one to thirty. And, um, but that also includes an increase in the overall proposed um, square footage for the site. So that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Summer. Um, any further comment from the applicant on that topic?
Yes, I just wanted to share why we took it from the finished floor. Um, those buildings are, some of them are tucked into the hillside and I wish city Boulder would calculate square feet the way the county does, but it, it, it actually is different, a different location depending on whether it's the front of the building or the back of the building. We did that for clarity because the finished floor is a flat surface. Uh, other than that, I agree with her definition of Boulder County height.
Okay, thank you. Um, with nothing further from the applicant or staff, we'll close the public hearing on this docket and move into discussion. So commissioners, what topics do you have or thoughts do you have about the docket?
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I'm happy to start the discussion. You know, I think I'm, I'm looking at this, I'm zooming out a little bit and just looking at the what we, what we approved previously overall and what we're looking at now. Um, and it seems like the applicants worked pretty hard to reduce the environmental impact. Um, I think one thing that was notable for me was the, the side by side, which I didn't quite get from the packet. Um, and the just better alignment of buildings. Um, seems like overall the visual impact from across the lake will be reduced for the entire development. I, I'm, I appreciate where staff is coming from in terms of uh, you know, wanting to, to keep the original owner's house where it was. At a certain point, I feel like we're splitting hairs a little bit, uh, given that they have overall reduced everything. Um, you know, we could, we could kind of, we could have taken issue with parking lot before or that sort of thing. So anyway, that's kind of.
This is Commissioner Goldfarb. Uh, in looking at the applicant's revisions, I, I like the fact that there are these compact villages. I think that's it, it, to my sense of this place, that that makes it a better facility. And there are, there is one fewer building. Granted, some of the other buildings are larger, but I think they serve a good purpose to allow larger groups, families to come and be close together while they're there. Uh, I just think that it, it serves the community well, uh, these changes that have been proposed.
Uh, this is Commissioner Shu. I, I echo most of what Commissioners Bloomfield and Goldfarb have said. I, I think it is tough for me to, you know, I, I guess I could see arguments on both staff and applicant side as far as what has more visual impact and what has less visual impact. But it is hard for me to think that one side has a better argument. And so because of that, I'm I'm in favor of just keeping the applicant's proposal. Um, I think fewer buildings is good. And then, yes, they're increasing square footage, but, but by an overall amount of two hundred and thirty-six square feet, which, you know, you're not going to be able to see visually. Uh, and I, I doubt you could really notice it, you know, some really much, uh, bigger buildings on one side. The distribution, I think it'd be very hard to visually tell, so I'm likely to favor the applicant's proposed site because I think it fulfills the criteria.
Commissioner Libby, um, I think my thoughts are aligned too. I mean, the, the way I'm thinking about this is that any way you look at this, this is a significant redevelopment of the site, right? Significant parking lot changes, the road changes, many, many new structures. Um, and we're talking about that last three percent of difference in some of the buildings. Is there an overall um, significant difference in this, in this proposal? I think there is. There's a lot less reconstruction, more new construction. There are significant differences in square, square footage, but I thought the presentation was, was compelling as well as the, the thought that went into the redesign and the reciting of things. So while several of the staff conditions that were suggested sound like they're acceptable, I'm also, I think, in support of the requested amendment from the applicant. Um, I would just also add, there were some opportunities to maybe shorten a roadway or accessway or something, just through the further design process and anything else that can be done, obviously, to reduce impact is appreciated. We're not here to look at ten feet here, twelve feet there, whatever it is. We're here to give overall guidance and I think that's a good way to go. Any other comments or discussion?
Commissioner McMillan, I won't add on to what has been said. I tend to agree. I, I like the new location. I like the fact that the southern road can perhaps get smaller. I think the less cut of, of landscape that we can make, I think, actually improves the visibility of the site. So to the extent that we can narrow that road from having a fire turnaround that close to the lake, I think it's actually a pretty big improvement. Um, I will say that, you know, the only problem I have with this new location, which it's really hard to determine exactly, you've seen a few different pictures with this new location of NC twelve and, and NC four is it's hard to tell exactly kind of what that tree screen will be um, as you look from the south. And so I, I don't know how to, you know, maybe just encourage staff and the applicant to continue to work together. There was an offer I heard from the applicant to, to move the structure to the, to the southwest a little bit. Um, as it perhaps would have less impactful, um, visual impacts if it was in that location. And so I think to the extent that we can voice that encouragement here today to say, let's find a way to conceal these, these new structures as, as best as possible from the south. Uh, and that can maybe be a work in progress. Um, I think that would be my vote if we are to agree to locate them in the applicant's preferred location.
It's Commissioner, Commissioner Libby. I think since there's a chance for small amendments like that before the Board of County Commissioners next hearing, that would be something that could be looked at in that, that time.
Great. I would encourage that. Thank you.
Okay, sounding like we're all pretty aligned. Any further comments? Uh, or I'm happy to make a motion. I took a, took a few notes on how to change the conditions. Any other comments? I'll give it a shot. Uh, try to make it as clear as possible. Give me a second here. Okay, I moved that the Planning Commission recommended the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approved docket SU dash twenty-one dash zero 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 five, the Gold Lake modification with the eleven conditions included in the staff report along with the many conditions passed that in the staff report from the previous uh, application with an adjustment to conditions two, three, and four um, to remove the restrictions on structures NC five, NC six, and NC twelve. Remembered in those conditions, um, and on condition four to change the reference um, to the most current, least, most current submission of the plan for the sites. That work for staff? Okay, I'll keep it.
Yes, it does.
We want to add something in for Gavin's proposal for screen?
I think it's in the record for the applicant and staff to work together. Um, if that's okay.
Then I'll say.
Just enough to say that again. Thanks, Mark. That's a second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, otherwise we'll go to a roll call vote. Sam Fitch?
In favor?
Sam Libby, I, and Goldfarb.
I.
Gavin?
Hi.
David?
I.
And Mark? Okay, motion passes. Thank you to the applicant. Thank you, Summer, for the presentation. Uh, our next docket, our third out of four is docket SU dash two one dash zero 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 six. Uh, the Robinson Vacation Rental. I think Sam is here to present and the floor is yours, Sam.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, good afternoon. My name is Sam Walker. I'm one of the planners here with the Community Planning and Permitting Department. And I am here to present on application SU twenty-one zero zero six, the Robinson Vacation Rental. Can everyone see my screen? Hopefully.
It's here now. Yep.
Okay. So the project is located at forty-three Riverside Drive. Should be seeing the vicinity map now. Um, so the property is located on the south side of Highway seven, kind of right where Riverside Drive starts. So the little red box in the center is the property. So stuck in the arrow there, so you can see it a little bit more clearly. The owners and the applicants of the property, or the owners of the property and the applicants for the project are Bruce and Liz Robinson. It's located within the forestry zoning district and the parcel is pretty small. It's just under three tenths of an acre in size. Um, it is a legal building lot, although they're not proposing any, uh, surface development as part of this proposal. The existing development on the property consists of a nine hundred and seventy-seven square foot cabin. That's where the rental is proposed to be located. And their request is to permit a vacation rental, uh, for up to a hundred and twenty nights per year with a minimum two night and maximum ten night rental period. Not mentioned in that description is also the request that they have, uh, space for four guests, which we'll talk more about in a few minutes. So this slide shows kind of the clip notes of the current regulations for vacation rentals in the land use code. So I've highlighted that they're going through the special review process because they're located within the forestry zoning district and they're located or their parcel is less than five acres and is not part of a subdivision. The other thing I'll point out is that there are parking requirements located in the land use code, which require them to provide one space per sleeping room in addition to one space for the required local manager. And all of that parking has to be, has to be located onsite. So here's a location map, just kind of showing you a more specific location of the property. Again, this is just south of Highway seven, right where Riverside Drive drops off the highway and then continues along the middle St. Frank Creek. Here's an aerial photo of the property. Um, it's, the parcel boundaries shown in red are a little bit offset. This is not uncommon with aerial photos when we're trying to tie them to parcel boundaries. So that is something I want to mention. We'll see a site plan in a second that clarifies the location of the cabin relative to the property lines. But this white box is the cabin that we're talking about, uh, locating their vacation rental in. Now we're looking at a Now we're looking at a comprehensive plan map. There's several things going on on the property that are kind of relevant to the review or, or were considered to be relevant to the review. The entire parcel is covered in a riparian area due to the proximity of Middle St. Frank Creek. There's also a riparian habitat connector, so like aquatic animals have habitat along the creek. And then there's an archaeologically sensitive travel route nearby, but not on the property and some significant natural communities off to the east. I've also included a floodplain map to show that the entire property is covered in either floodway or hundred-year floodplain. So the floodway is essentially where we're guaranteed to have flooding in a flood event. And then the hundred-year floodplain is a little bit less common. Uh, I just wanted to point this out. This is typically something that would be sort of concerning, but there's no surface development proposed as part of this project and the floodplain team uh didn't have any real concerns with the proposal. I've also included a map of the prebles area. Prebles are a federally protected species of mouse. And so their habitat generally follows some of the riparian areas in the foothills. So here we have, or we've shown that the entire area of property is covered in preble zone three. Zone three prebles habitat is habitat that they could potentially live in, but they're not known to. This is the site plan submitted by the applicant. It's essentially just a survey. So you can see that's a little bit different from the parcel boundaries we saw in the aerial. The cabin is more central to the property. And then I'll point out that they've also included partal, partially the existing gravel drive. This is a private access road that's used to access this cabin as well as two or three that are further off to the east. Uh, this becomes kind of relevant on the next slide, which shows their parking plan. So if you remember the slide, uh, a few minutes ago that we looked at that had the parking requirements. The applicants have proposed or, or originally proposed that there be two sleeping rooms in the cabin, which would mean they needed three parking spaces total. They would need two for uh, or one for each of the sleeping rooms and then one for that local manager. So on the left here, we have the applicant's parking plan. Uh, I've, I've kind of clarified with some boxes and lines here. Uh, but this was the parking plan that they proposed. You can see they extended that gravel drive, the private road. They extended those dotted lines off to the east and then they proposed two parking spaces in kind of an existing. Uh, it's not really a curb cut, but kind of a cleared area that we'll see in the photos. And then they also proposed a third spot for the parking or for the uh, manager, the local manager to the north. However, their site plan showed that it was not located on the property. And then I kind of tried to superimpose the same information onto an aerial photo off to the right. So the same three parking spaces. The kind of fuchsia line right here is representing the actual parcel boundary or at least a better representation of the parcel boundary, again, because these red lines relative to the aerial are not really accurate. Here's the floor plan they submitted. So you can see they did originally have two sleeping rooms. They had the bedroom right here, which I'm circling with my cursor, if you can see that. And then on the left, we had the living room, which had a pullout sofa bed. So that's where we got the two sleeping rooms. After kind of having a discussion with the applicant, they uh didn't think that they could get that third parking spot actually located on the property. Again, those parking spaces have to be located physically on the site. And their proposal was not on their property. And so they elected to remove the sofa bed from the living room. Therefore, only having one sleeping room and decreasing their parking requirement by one space. So now we'll take a look at a couple of photos of the site. This is the uh private bridge that they access the property from. So if you're standing where I am in this photo, Riverside Drive is directly behind me to the north. And then we're facing south across Middle St. Frank Creek and the cabin on the left here is the cabin in question where the vacation rental will be located. This is just a slightly better photo of that cabin, again, facing mostly south, a little bit east. This is the eastern cabin face. So just showing the other side of it. You can see, if I go back to the previous slide, you can see the main entrance to the cabin is on the north, uh, northwestern corner. And then the other exit to the cabin is on the southeastern corner. This photo shows that existing parking area, so they pretty clearly only had space for two vehicles. And then the proposed third parking space is shown in the applicant submitted photos here. So if you, the, in the previous photo that we just looked at, the White County vehicle was parked right here. So you can see they proposed their third space on the other side. Again, that's not on their property as far as we can tell. And so that was not really going to be a viable solution. Terms of referrals, we sent a wide variety of referrals to several different agencies. The county building team responded that they needed to meet their licensing requirements. Um, that an inspection would be required as part of those licensing requirements and that they would need to go through a wildfire mitigation process of some kind. The access and engineering team noted that they had legal access to the property and noted that the uh, resulting traffic from the proposal of a vacation rental was pretty low and that there were no anticipated negative impacts on the surrounding transportation network. Her wildfire mitigation team noted that they, the property is not currently wildfire partner certified and would need to be before they could commence renting it. And then required that the applicants provide wildfire information uh, to all of their renters, which is a uh sometimes requirement in the licensing for short-term rentals. The Public Health Department noted that the onsite wastewater set treatment system was adequate for the number of people that was originally proposed. And the county floodplain team, as I said before, expressed no concerns, but recommended. But they did recommend that the applicants provide flood hazard information to all of their renters in the same way that they would provide uh, wildfire mitigation or wildfire hazard info. We also sent eighty-three notifications to members of the public. Uh, staff received three comment, or I think five total comments. Three were kind of generally just expressing support for the project. And two expressed concerns about it, uh, mainly related to the potential for rentals to start renters to start wildfires through having outdoor fires, which are prohibited by the licensing. It's not really something that we're reviewing here. Uh, we're just reviewing the use, the licensing that will be required if they get approval. Uh, will cover outdoor fires which are prohibited. And then there were also one commenter expressed access concerns related to the private bridge that's used to get to the property. That bridges in the public right of way. Uh, received no conflict responses from the Fish and Wildlife Service, Parks and Open Space Department and the Boulder Valley and Longmont Conservation Districts, as well as Estes Park Power and Light. And we didn't get a response from long-range planning, the assessor, the attorney, the water conservancy district, Century Link Communications, or History Colorado. So on the next couple of slides, I've just pulled out a couple of the special use criteria that we thought were more relevant to the project. Most of them, we didn't have any concerns with. Um, so the first one that we're going to take a look at is number two, which says that the use will be compatible with the surrounding area. Um, staff found that the use would generally be compatible with the surrounding area. The Riverside Drive in general, it's almost exclusively residential properties with a mixture of year-round and seasonal residence. It's also historically been a very popular location for short-term or vacation rentals before we had a definition for what a vacation rental was. And then we had no concerns about a lack of compatibility caused by traffic uh to and from the property if we approve the rental. Next, we have standard seven, which addresses the use's impact on the multimodal transportation system. We want to make sure that we're not going to cause undue traffic hazards. And so again, they, they have legal access to the property. There were no concerns with the volume of traffic, which was going to be pretty comparable to a single-family home, which is what we're currently considering it to be. And the applicants agreed to remove one of their sleeping rooms from the proposal so that uh, they could meet their parking requirement. So as conditioned or as a result, we have no concerns about impacts on the traffic system. And I believe this is the final standard that I put in, which is that the use won't cause an unreasonable risk of harm to people or property associated with natural hazards. So uh, there were no concerns from our floodplain team regarding the presence of the floodway and a hundred-year floodplain on the property. As long as the, the applicants provide their renters with good information about flood hazards. And then there's no surface development proposed. There's no kind of physical change to the property occurring as part of this proposal. And so we didn't have any concerns with any identified geologic hazards on the site either. Uh, furthermore, the wildfire concerns that came in from the public, we feel are going to be addressed by the uh, wildfire partner certification and the wildfire safety information that will be provided to the renters. And again, that's mostly tied to the licensing that will be required after uh if, or if the applicants gain approval of their proposal. So all that being said, the CPNP staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend a conditional approval of the proposal to the Port of County Commissioners uh based on, or subject to the conditions that were contained in the staff recommendation you received last week. And I do have those conditions listed on the next slide. If you would like to look at them in detail. Other than that, I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you, Sam. Any questions for staff?
This is Commissioner Shu. Um, Sam, can you go to the conditions on the next page? I just uh want to point out some typos. So condition five, I think there's an extra is and an extra and there. Um, can you confirm that's correct?
The, in condition five?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, it is. Sorry. Yeah, we can, we can make sure we get that corrected before it goes to the planning commission.
Thanks.
Or excuse me, the Board of County Commissioners.
Commissioner McMillan, I have a question about condition five two. Is the minimum of two nights um, per rental period, i- is that a, is that specific to this application or is that a code requirement, uh, minimum requirement of two nights?
That's, that's specific to the application. It's, that was how I read the applicant's proposal and so that's the way that we put it in. The, in the past, I believe that the county has required other vacation rentals for various reasons to have minimum night stays of two or three nights typically, but usually tied to specific requirements or specific concerns that we had. In this case, it was tied to the applicant's original proposal and that's why it's written out that way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hearing no additional questions. We can close that and move on to an applicant presentation if they are present and wish to speak.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
The applicant is present and they should be promoted.
And Mr. Robinson, I see you here. If you can unmute, we'll be able to hear you.
Unmute?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, I, I think the only comment that we had was that uh we do already have our wildfire partners certification.
Okay.
Otherwise, it looked good.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I don't think that has any bearing on the conditions. So that's great. Thank you for your feedback. Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none. I'll move into public comment. Uh, still no signups, I believe, um, or people in the chat. Is that correct, Anna?
It is correct, but if we could provide thirty seconds, um, I've just opened chat up for anyone to sign up to speak if they'd like. Place your name and address into the chat, please. Thank you.
Okay, hearing none. I think we're good, Anna. Um, we're seeing none in the chat. Um, any comments, Sam, from staff, uh, further on the wildfire partners thing or not?
Um, I was just going off of what the wildfire part or wildfire mitigation team told me, so I'll, I can look into it further. I think regardless, they'll probably have to update their certification, even if they do have one. Uh, but that'll all be taken care of during the licensing process.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, having no further comment, we'll close public hearing on this docket and open up for Commissioner discussion.
Commissioner Bloomfield, uh, seems fairly straightforward to me.
Yeah, Commissioner McMillan, uh, second that, uh, I'm a favor approval. I, I, the one thing for discussion, I, I wonder if we should delete condition of approval number five. And I say that only to be consistent with, with applications as they come through. I, I don't know why we would um, require a minimum stay here and, and not in any other application. So that's the only tweak I would make. I um we're having another application next where we don't make that requirement, for example. So I don't know, I don't know why this one or needs to get this one.
Uh, this is Commissioner Shu. I actually think we should keep it. I know from personal experience, when you apply for this, you know, to try to get buy-off from neighbors and stuff, you want to say you're not running a hotel where people are going in and out every day, different people. And, you know, for whatever reason, the applicant decided to include that in their application. So I think we should have it rather than to expand their rights beyond it.
Yeah, I, I think when I kind of pointed out would be it's, it's not a code requirement. And I, I guess each of these are individual applications. I just, I feel like we should be consistent. The other thing on the next one, you'll see that it's up to three hundred and sixty-five nights a year. And I guess, uh, I'm just looking for equal and the same treatment to, to different applicants. Um, I do see your point and I don't disagree. But if we're going to leave it in here, I think it should be something that applies to most applications that come in. Uh, unless there's a reason why it shouldn't be there. So it's not a huge deal to me. The applicant, you know, I know is, is made that proposal. I just, I just find it odd that we would choose to implement it on one person, but not a, but not another.
As Commissioner Libby, I, I tend to agree Gavin on, on having fewer restrictions. I think a few months ago, we had the first of these after the change to allow this kind of application. And we had a similar discussion about number of nights and uh, number of nights per year. Um, I think some of that reflects seasonality, right? There, there are certain cabins that are only available four months a year or whatever it might be. But I, I guess, I guess my perspective would be um if it's helpful to the applicant to put a limitation on that to either just control the season or to help convince their neighbors. Us putting it into the conditions of approval makes it more formal than them saying, well, we told the county it would be a hundred and twenty days max. But seeing that nowhere in the record. Again, if they want to provide it, I guess it's kind of um fine with me to include it. I wouldn't want us to have some kind of minimum, maximum that we apply that's not in the code, to your point. It is a sticky spot for me too.
Yeah, and this is not, certainly not something I'm gonna uh take to the very end here. I, I, I'm, I'm fine doing it either way. I just think, and maybe this is more feedback for staff on this in the future. Um, I think it's, it would be important to just be consistent on how we make these conditions or don't make these conditions in the future. Um, that's my feedback. But I would be okay approving it as is, if everyone felt that way. I, I can make a motion if, unless there's any other discussion on that particular topic.
Yeah, I, I, I was going to ask staff if they could clarify both where, where that number comes from, the, the maximum number of days and the minimum number of nights. And then whether that's a standard question that's asked on these applications or that's up to the applicant to provide. Just to get to your point, Gavin, not being consistent, it'd be good to know if that's like a, something that's asked for or not. And if that was provided in the application, I don't know which page in the application it was on.
Sure. So the, uh, Sam Walker, Community Planning and Permitting Department. So the, I think the, the minimum and maximum number of nights is sorry, are you talking about the number of nights annually or the maximum nights that can be tied to one stay? Both, okay.
Yeah.
So the uh minimum number, there, or the minimum and maximum number of nights uh, is typically a question that we ask of our applicants. Again, these are kind of new regulations, so I don't think we have a, a super solid kind of form that we use or, or formulaic way that we address these applications. Um, in this case, I, I, the minimum and maximum were, if I remember correctly, proposed by the applicants, other applicants for similar proposals. I've asked if they had a minimum or maximum that they would want to work with, just to kind of give us parameters uh before we send out notifications. Um, and then the maximum number of nights per year is, again, typically an applicant proposal. It's something that if there isn't any proposal, we'll often ask for clarity. In this specific case, the hundred and twenty nights maximum per year is tied to the applicants. They only rent it out during the summer months because there's not adequate heating during, for the winter time. Um they only rented out during the summer months because there's not adequate heating during for the winter time. Um and you may you may want to ask them as well. Um cuz I don't want to be putting words in their mouth, but that was my understanding is that they uh they only rent out the cabin for a certain number of nights per year anyway. And so that's where that maximum number of nights came from.
Thank you, Commissioner Olivia. Thanks for the exposition. That that sounds good to me. I just wanted to hear a bit more of the narrative around how that gets discussed. Um I see it in the narrative kind of free text that was submitted, I think. And um yeah, that makes sense to me. So I'm happy to move forward, Gavin, with a motion.
Great. I know that the planning commission conditionally approved docket SU twenty-one dash zero 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 six Robinson Vacation Rental with the eight conditions of approval and staff report.
This is Commissioner Shu. I will second that.
Okay, thank you for the second. Uh any discussion? Go to a vote. Uh Sam, you can go first.
Uh approve?
Yeah, Sam Libby, I as well, Anne.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
And Gavin.
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you to staff and to the applicant for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. I like that we have ones we don't have to recommend to the county commissioners. These ones we just approved here. Um okay, our next docket is uh docket SU dash two one dash zero 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 seven. The Kishen Vacation Rental. I think Kathy's here. Hi Kathy.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners.
Go for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience. And I realize this is the last one, so I'll try to be expeditious about it. Let me just share my screen. Do you see that? I was trying to get to the presentation mode.
Yep, we see the slide, but not presentation mode, so it's small.
I wrote to the side here. All right, how is that?
Looks good.
All right, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Uh this is Kathy Sandoval, Staff Planner. That's processing application SU dash two one dash zero 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 seven. The Kishner Vac- Vacation Rental at eighteen Juniper Heights. The property is in the forestry zone district. It's approximately about one point six two acres. It is on unsubdivided land and it's a legally uh building lot. The current uh structure of the residence is two thousand sixty-three square feet. It was constructed in nineteen seventy-six. The applicants are requesting a vacation rental for up to two guests at a time for approximately three hundred and sixty-five days per year. Since the subject property is less than five acres in size and it's not the primary residence of the applicants and property or they are requesting it be rented in excess of sixty days per year, which is only approved through the special use review, which is required. Again, as uh what uh Sam Walker had previously uh presented, that this is the area in our land use code where the vacation rental is located. It does need to go through the special use, as I stated, because it is less than five acres and it's unsubdivided. They do need to have at least one parking space per sleeping room. In addition to one space for the manager and maintain a Boulder County Vacation Rental License. This is where it's approximately located at the intersection of Juniper Heights and Gross Dam Road. So this real little area where I have my cursor. This is an aerial of the site. Basically, all the structures are pretty much close together in this neighborhood of Crestview Parkway Road. This uh circled area is the existing house. Uh this is the comprehensive plan layer, which does not have any environmental resource identified in the comprehensive plan located on the subject property. The only thing that we have is a uh roadway visual number of one point three nine, which is not uh significant visual impact of the area. And in fact, the our referral from Parks and Open Space indicated no concerns regarding the impact to our natural resources. Going back, looking at the site plan, again, this articulates a lot more closely where the house is located. Kind of in the C-shaped area, the septic fields in front of it to the east. The garage to the western part of the lot along with the existing parking spaces adjacent to Gross Dam Road. There are two spaces located there as well as potentially two spaces located off of Juniper Heights Road, which goes into the driveway. However, Juniper Heights Road is a privately maintained road, as where Gross Dam Road is a county maintained road. This gives you uh the uh floor plan from the applicant. See if I can zoom in a little bit more to give you a better sense of that. We're looking at just one bedroom for the whole site, which will be on the ground floor. Few shots of the uh building that we're looking at. So this is from Juniper Heights driveway, looking toward the east of the house facing sort of the entryway. This picture is the south entrance or looking from the south of the dwelling unit. The closest neighbor is the northeast along the county roads uh of Gross Dam Road, which is maintained again by the county. This is a site looking to the uh west of the lot, so it slopes down the uh the land, so we're kind of looking up toward the house. And the final uh picture of the site is looking from Gross Dam Road to that dwelling unit that's adjacent to it. I did want to highlight the parking areas uh that were noted. So this is the garage that's adjacent to Gross Dam Road with the pad showing a pretty adequate parking available for two parking spaces. And this is the driveway area off of Juniper Heights Road. Again, it's a privately maintained road and gives you some of the boundaries in relationship to where that uh parking driveway space would end. We got a variety of referrals from our uh usual uh referral agencies. The wildlife uh mitigation uh referral has the standard uh powder information as far as the requirement for a wildfire partner certificate. Certainly displaying that wildfire prevention, prevention and evacuation for uh future renters. So they know how to evacuate should there be a fire and also restricting any outdoor fire use on the property. Our building safety team also had the standard uh reply in regards to the requirements for building inspection to ensure that it has the adequate smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, safety features, as well as egress uh windows and proper just running uh conditions of the house itself. Our access and engineering staff confirmed there was legal access that was demonstrated from its adjacency to Gross Dam Road. Uh there was originally an access permit that was uh permitted through T A P zero eight seven six that it provided uh access from Gross Dam Road. The location of Gross Dam Road uh in Juniper Height intersection is not consistent with what the location was approved in that uh original uh T A P, but the access can remain in this current condition or current location. However, if there's any future planning, they may need to uh upgrade it to meet the current multi-transportation standards. Uh if the applicant does want to also use Juniper Heights as an access point to park, we will require a recorded easement that will need to be submitted to community planning and permitting for review before that access point is allowed for rental guests to be used. Our Public Health Department uh noted that the size of the existing onsite wastewater system was uh big enough for a maximum of four people, including children, uh and provides enough certainly uh uh size for the what's being proposed by the applicant of only two guests. The adjacent property owners referrals that we had uh sent out, we sent out thirty-nine. We received four back. One only was opposed to it with voicing concerns regarding wildfire, wildlife, property damage, traffic, trash, etc. And the renters inexperienced to uh maneuver in snow and getting stuck in the on the roadway in the wintertime. One applicant, one adjacent property owner had recommended also, including sort of a sandbox bucket. Should they use that Juniper Heights uh access point? So they have a better way to get out of it as well as not allowing any firearms to be discharged on the site. Other agencies that responded with no conflict, we only got one from the county parks and open space. And agencies that did not respond included the following Cold Creek Canyon Improvement Association, Cold Creek Fire Protection District, Boulder Valley and Longmont Conservation District, Hilton County Development Department, Jefferson County Planning and Zoning and Century Link, as well as United Power, Inc. I do go through all the different sort of criteria, but I'm only gonna highlight the ones that are perhaps more relevant uh to this particular application. So it certainly does comply with the minimum zoning requirements that is noted in condition or and uh criteria one, that it cannot be used uh for to be marketed for weddings or receptions and it must maintain a Boulder County Vacation Rental License with the following uh conditions as part of that licensing requirement. It will be certainly compatible with the surrounding area. The Coal Creek Canyon area has a history of seasonal tourism and lodging. The uh applicant or the transportation uh access and engineering noted that they're only anticipating five average daily trips, which is uh anticipated for the one-bedroom dwelling. This is even less than the current load that we anticipate with a single-family dwelling of nine. There certainly is adequate parking in the garage area and certainly if they want to do add more parking with the Juniper Heights Road, as if we get that easement that's recorded, that could be another option to add some additional parking on site. This really was in accordance with our comprehensive plan. It's not an over intensification of the land area. In fact, this uh particular property went through our T D C program and is got a restricted covenants on it that only allows two thousand square feet of residential floor area. We don't foresee any uh adverse effects on it. The ca- Community Capital Improvements Program. We did don't see any uh impact on our community facilities for criteria six. Coal Creek Canyon Fire Protection District did not submit or voice any concerns about this request. And as I noted earlier, the um site has certainly a sized wastewater system that can uh accommodate four people and children and it certainly has a potable water well. I did highlight already uh for criteria seven, what's required for the transportation system. They certainly do have adequate parking space for one sleeping room plus one space for the manager. Uh there is uh enough room there for the guest and manager. And it's the responsibility of the applicant to inform guests of the parking restrictions. At this point, they can only use the uh Gross Dam Road parking area adjacent to the garage. Well, we don't see any uh significant air or odor, water or noise pollution, as long as they're in compliance with the vacation rental licensing process. I noted earlier, there's no visual impact. It's very uh minimal in this area. We don't see any future health, safety, welfare of present or future inhabitants. And regarding criteria ten, as long as they're in compliance with the vacation rental uh licensing requirements. And on number criteria eleven, uh as far as establishing appropriate balance between current economic, environmental, societal needs. This will in fact sort of help economically for the applicants to be able to rent a vacation rental, which otherwise may remain vacant and provide some additional income for the applicants without impacting the surrounding area. And finally, on criteria twelve and thirteen, again, we don't see any uh risk or harm to people uh in the future in regards to it, any hazards. There's no hazards that were noted on the comprehensive plan. There's no new development plan for this area. And they certainly are not altering any historic drainage patterns or flow rates. So that uh uh is the end of sort of my presentation. And the Community Planning and Permitting Staff recommends conditional approval of docket SU dash two one dash zero 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 seven. The Kishner Vacation Rental, subject to the conditions outlined in staff recommendations. So again, that concludes my uh presentation. I'm available for any questions and appreciate your time and patience.
Thank you, Kathy. Uh questions for staff? I'll start with one. Um maybe I missed it, but back to this question about Juniper Heights Road and the easement. Could you just revisit why the easement is required for that access to the parking?
Right, that was noted by our access and engineering staff that uh we would need a recorded document to uh further illustrate that rental guests can use that private access road area in order to be able to use the parking.
Okay, the entirety of Juniper Heights Road is private.
Correct.
So there's no guaranteed access. That makes sense. Thank you.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
This is Commissioner Fitch. Uh I have a question for legal staff about whether we could in fact legally impose and require as a condition the lease condition that would prohibit firing the firearms uh from the property covered by the vacation rental. Strike me, the answer probably is no, but I certainly gunfire in the county, unincorporated county is a significant issue in that western part of the county. So would it be legal? If we did as the neighbor suggested?
Hi, this is Erica Rogers, Assistant County Attorney. I have not looked into that issue, but you give me a moment.
This is Commissioner Bloomfield. I I think my question would also be what is, what are the restrictions already in place just in the county? Um and would that cover what you're going for?
Yeah, the suggestions in the um in the review of the criteria suggest that that be included as a provision in the lease by the owner to the renters. Um it's not mentioned in the conditions of our approval, I believe. So I don't I don't think that the approval here referenced anything about firearms. The suggestion, it could be included in the lease. Unless I'm wrong.
Uh this is Kathy Sandoval, Staff Planner. That is correct. The conditions do not include that.
So I I agree with the question. I think it's it's moot in that the conditions don't refer to it, is my opinion. But we can wait if we get any info from Erica. Um any further questions? Will we wait for that if we get anything? Okay, I'll I'll leave space, Erica, at the end after the applicant speaks if there's interest uh in giving more information. That's okay.
Sounds good.
Um is the applicant here, Anna, to speak?
The applicant is present and has just been promoted.
Go for it when you're ready.
Hi there. Well, can you hear me okay?
We can. Yes, thank you.
Okay, um well, I have, I really appreciate um being given the opportunity to speak today. I'll I'll just be brief here. Um my husband and I um live in Eldorado Springs, so we're about thirty minutes away from home. And I have been managing the rental um and I closely manage it. Um my husband also is a contractor, so he's available um to to handle anything that comes up with the house or the property. Um in terms of the short-term rental and keeping the rental low-key, I only allow a maximum of two adults. No children, no pets, um guests are usually um on honeymoons or romantic getaways, so it's pretty quiet. Um we are requesting to be able to rent the cabin um all year round. And so the land uh use planner that I was working with um before Kathy, it was Ryan, um mentioned that we should just, you know, add in the three hundred and sixty-five days. However, um we stay up there, our friends stay up there. And so we don't intend on actually renting it for three hundred and sixty-five days, but you can stay at the cabin all year round, so. That's why we put that in there. Um yeah, and I'm also happy to add into the lease that people can't use firearms. I don't think that's been an issue at all on the property, but I'm happy to add that in as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions from Commissioners for the applicant? Okay, thank you for your comments. Uh and we'll go back now to any. Okay, thank you for your comments, and we'll go back now to any public comment. I assume we also will have none, but we'll open the floor here and any signups. I don't see any. And we'll give a few seconds for anybody else to put their name and address in the chat if you wish to speak. Otherwise, we'll move on from that. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to any further statements. Kathy from staff or Erica, if you have anything, I don't think we'll require anything, but.
Hey, yeah, this is Erica Rogers, Assistant County Attorney. It's not, it sounds like the answer to this question is not going to affect your decision today, so I'd rather take some time to look into it and I can have information ready for the B O C C hearing if they, if they need that, if that works for you.
It does. I don't think there's a B O C C hearing for this docket, but maybe next time it comes up, we can cover that if, if needed. I'm of the opinion we don't need to cover that further. Wait for that. So no further staff comments. We can close public hearing and then move into our own discussion for the commissioners.
Commissioner Libby, this is Commissioner Nick. If I could just ask one more question, because I, I'm not sure what you just said is true. When I look at the staff recommendation for this docket item, it says we're recommending to the county commissioners.
Ah, my mistake.
I, I don't know. I guess my question for staff was the prior hearing in Aaron. Is this one correct or? Or vice versa?
Yeah, good question. Thank you, Gavin.
I, I guess the question is, are we making a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners and will this be heard by the Board of County Commissioners?
Commissioners, this is Summer Frederick with C P and P. I'll jump in. These do go on to the Board of County Commissioners for their, to a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. So my mistake earlier on the earlier docket, everything I think stands, but how we phrase that motion, which I think is not material, but thank you for the clarification, Gavin.
Well, I'll just continue. My only question on this is the same one I had last time. It's just that the desire to have some consistency in night stays and minimum night stays, et cetera. If we're going to impose those types of conditions, there's not one on this application, then I think that's, that's fine, but I just bring it up to, to show that, you know, we've got a little inconsistency in my opinion. I'm okay with the application as written and the conditions as written, but just want to bring that up.
Yes, Commissioner Libby, I, I have no, no concerns. Happy to move forward on, on your topic, Gavin. I think, having thought a bit more about it since we discussed a few minutes ago, I think my recommendation would be just for staff to consider clearer language for applicants. When that topic comes up to say you're not required to have a maximum or a minimum number of nights. If you wish to, you're welcome to include that. We can make it a condition or something like that, just to make sure it's clear guidance so that people don't think they should be putting a maximum in or should be putting a minimum in if it's not required. Otherwise, I have no other comments on the conditions.
I'm having to make a motion. Commissioner Bloomfield, I move that planning commission conditionally approve and recommend that the Board of County Commissioners conditionally approve docket SU dash twenty-one dash zero 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 seven, the Kishon Vacation Rental with the seven conditions that are in the stack pocket.
Thank you, Mark. This is Commissioner Libby. I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll do a vote on the motion. Sam Fitch.
Approve.
Sam Libby, I, and Goldfarb.
Hi.
Dave Sue.
Hi.
Gavin Billen.
Hi.
And Mark Bloomfield.
Hi.
Okay, the motion passes. Thank you to staff and the applicant, and good luck in the next hearing.
Thank you very much.
That's our last docket for today. Apologies in the confusion on the previous motion, but I think we're okay shape on that. Anything further from staff before we close the meeting? Don't think so. Okay, do we move to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Bloomfield.
I think Commissioner Libby, I'll second that. Voice vote of I, everyone.
Hi.
All right, thank you all for your time. Thanks to staff and have a good rest of your month.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, commissioners.